Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call for the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting of September 28th. Benson.
Benson here.
Benson is present. Brunick.
Brunick here.
Brunick is present. Sarda?
Sarda here.
Sarda is present. Mybaum?
Mybaum, present.
Mybaum is present. Minor, are you with us yet?
Minor is with you.
Minor is present. Mosier?
Mosier is here.
Mosier is present. Shram?
Shram here.
Shram is present. Weber?
Weber is here.
Weber is present. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, present.
Mayor Johnson is present. City Manager Leon?
Leon is here.
City Manager Leon is present. City Attorney Dan Herter?
Dan Herter here.
City Attorney Dan Herter is present.
You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of September 14th. What is your pleasure?
Mosier moves the minutes.
Weber second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on the minutes. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Mosier?
Mosier aye.
Mosier is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Approval of the minutes passes nine zero.
We do have a little bit of housekeeping before we proceed. So number four under the consent item agenda, which is regarding a Meridian District event, is no longer needed. So I would ask for a motion to amend tonight's agenda to omit that item.
Minor moves to amend and omit.
Sarda second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this issue? Al, roll call, please.
Brunick aye.
Is aye. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosier?
Mosier aye.
Mosier is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Mayor, oops, I'm sorry. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Motion to change the agenda passes nine zero.
Now it's time to recognize a week we've all come to look forward to in Yankton. It's 2020 Manufacturing Week. So whereas recognizing September 28th through October 2nd as Yankton's Manufacturing Week is an effective way to highlight the importance of manufacturing in our nation's economy and draw attention to the many rewarding, highly skilled manufacturing jobs, as well as celebrating the educational programs here in Yankton that prepare our future workforce for careers in manufacturing. And whereas 34 businesses in Yankton are classified as manufacturers, manufacturing represents 31.9% of the local workforce. The manufacturing industry is a dynamic segment of Yankton's economy and an integral part of the economic community. Whereas Yankton manufacturers produce food products, canvas and related products, automotive, printing and publishing, asphalt paving, rubber and miscellaneous plastic products, cement, ready-mixed concrete, aluminum fabrication, sheet metal, mining machinery, special dies, tooling, electronic components, semiconductors, aircraft parts, and so many more. That part always, I think, surprises us, all the things that are built right here. And whereas Yankton manufacturers contribute 32, more than $32 million in gross sales and $2.2 million in taxable sales, and whereas Yankton manufacturing touches everyone in the Yankton community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Nathan Johnson, do hereby proclaim September 28th through October 2nd as Yankton Manufacturers Week and recognize the contributions to our city by all of those manufacturing employees, employers, and owners. So let's give them a round of applause. We have Nancy Winandy here from Yankton Area Progressive Growth who will share some thoughts on this occasion.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule to acknowledge Manufacturing Week. We here in Yankton really appreciate what our manufacturing community brings to us from an economic development standpoint because there are so many opportunities that are afforded to our local citizens because of what the employers in manufacturing bring to our community. They are really a strong force to be reckoned with. The week for manufacturing week is a little bit different than usual. We're used to having tours of the facilities, being able to go in and see many of those products that you mentioned that are manufactured here in Yankton. And I know it's an educational opportunity for many of our citizens to see what is made behind those walls that they drive by in our community every day. So I do want to take the time to thank the companies for what they're doing to keep our employees in the manufacturing industry safe, but also thanking the employees for all that they do for the community as well. They really are the strength of what we have here for our manufacturing community. I also want to say that we hope that next year we are able to bring back the Manufacturing Olympics as well, which we know is always a big hit, very competitive among the manufacturing community. So we look forward to doing that, but we do thank you for acknowledging manufacturing this week in our community.
Thank you, Nancy. Next is the City Managers' report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Members of the Commission. Our mission is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive even during a pandemic. So added that last little bit for a while. I have a few things for you tonight. First, I want to talk about the most important thing, and that's the health of our employees. We just learned tonight that we have another positive case in our organization. So we have had a handful, or I guess a few positives in our organization. When we have a positive case, we make sure that person is at home and we ask them the appropriate questions if they've had close contact with another employee for a sustained period of time. And if so, we contact those employees and let them know and make suggestions to them. We also do a deep cleaning depending upon the timing of this individual's illness, when the last time they were in the facility in which they worked. And sometimes that includes, you know, the sanitizing misters that we have purchased as a part of our CARES Act. So we're starting to see folks that either have COVID-19 themselves in our organization or they've been contacted by either Department of Health or by someone who is positive saying, "Look, you know, I'm positive and we had contacts." So we're doing okay right now. But just so the public knows and you know, we could have to disrupt some services because of that. So one thing that I've committed to the employees is that when we have a positive case, I won't, of course, reveal the name. That's not appropriate, but let them know what their work area is and let them know when we have a positive because I feel like, you know, our organization, people in our organizations should be able to know that. So working through that just like everyone else is. I have not taken a position on Halloween or trick-or-treating, and I would suggest that we do not do that either, or that you do not do that either as a commission. Had several questions come towards me about whether or not we were going to take a position on Halloween or trick-or-treating. And I think that we can trust our citizens enough to know if that's something that they want to participate in, both from the kids' side of things, if you're a parent with kids, if you think that's something you want your kids to participate in or not, also from the homeowner's side if they want to participate in that or not. There is some guidance on the CDC about holiday events in the fall, not just Halloween, but also Dia de Muerte, the Day of the Dead, as well as Thanksgiving. So there's some guidance there for people. They can read that and they can decide what they want to do. But I'm not recommending that you all take any position either way. That said, our Parks Department is working on something, putting something together that might be fun for families to participate in on Halloween in a safe fashion. So we want to continue to develop some, I guess, pandemic-safe or pandemic-friendly events and activities in the fall and winter, as we know it's going to be a long fall and winter for our community. Give them a chance to get out and still be a part of our community. So as Brittany and Todd and that team get those details put together, you'll be more informed. But at this point, we don't want to be accused of canceling Halloween or saying Halloween's okay if somebody were to get sick on Halloween. So people can do what it is they'd like to do. So I wanted to lift that forward. On Friday, we had some of you attend the tour of the Huether Family Aquatics Facility. And so thank you for those who could attend. Mike Huether and his wife Cindy were in attendance, as well as some of their other family members. And they were just blown away, got a real rave review from Mr. Huether today from the tour and just excitement for the facility. So really proud of that. He did, of course, challenge us, as Mike Huether does, to do the next big thing. So you guys can think about that this winter while you're staying distant from everyone. What's our next big thing? And he also encouraged us to do some fundraising to allow access for maybe some folks that wouldn't otherwise have access to the aquatics facility. So I'll be talking to you a little bit about that and the parameters, about us getting involved in that kind of fundraising. But very excited. He was very pleased. And Todd Larson did a phenomenal job giving the tour. So if you didn't get to have a tour and you still want one, I would recommend Todd. He got me excited just with his enthusiasm. So I'm getting excited now for that to open as well. So I think you would all enjoy it if you hadn't had a chance. I want to talk a little bit about something that's on your agenda a little later. Tonight you have before you the opportunity for us to go into an agreement with Sourcewell. That's one of these, I guess, consortiums where we can buy off of a bid of someplace else. And if that's approved, we'll be looking to buy the dispatch councils to be able to separate our dispatchers through that bid without having to put together all those things on our own. That's one way in which we're utilizing CARES Act funds, and we may buy other things that way as well. We did get our technology upgrade quote. We had good, we felt, quotes come back so far. They've been in about $150,000, $140,000, $150,000 range. We know that the streaming encoder and the peg channel equipment will be reimbursable under CARES Act. The other items, the meeting room equipment and our technology upgrades, upgrades to Dwayne's engineering, which is innovative and has worked for us, but we think we can find some better equipment for the long term. We will submit that and we will have the state say yes or no. I will bring that piece to you. It does fall within, in the exempt category through our state bid process because it's tech, not because it's technology, but because of the amount of dollars there. I would like to bring it forward to you all to say yes or no to the actual vendor that we bring forward to you once we have our quote. So that'll be, that piece will be coming forward to you. Whether or not that they will, they'll fund it, I guess, will have to be determined by the state. We do think it's something that should be eligible. However, we've been surprised before there. So I just wanted to let you know a little bit more about some of the ways that we're making purchases. And, you know, we are under a time crunch. So if for some reason what's recommended isn't where you want to be, we may have to go back and reconfigure some things. But that'll come forward, we think, at the next meeting. I think, I think that that's about it unless there are questions for me directly about how we're handling things in our facilities or anything else. I will let you get to your business.
I have one question. Have those handy-dandy garbage vouchers been sent out yet? I don't believe I've seen one. So I was just checking.
They've been sent out. We received ours at our house. So I don't know if we missed the Mosier household. If Adam's online, which I thought that I saw him earlier, maybe he can speak to whether or not they have been used. We were open this Saturday at the transfer station.
Yes, this is Adam. I'm not aware of any being used yet, but they were mailed out. So some may take a little longer to get to where they need to go than others, so.
Yeah. If you didn't receive one, you can certainly contact the city. I know for us, we put ours tucked away and we're just trying to, we're going to make the most of the effort. So we're going to make sure we can get every little last thing packed into the back of the truck before we go over. So maybe people are waiting a little bit for those types of things.
Any other questions for the City Manager? I did get a note from Yankton Transit today, which is, of course, an agency that we fund, that they are willing to provide free rides to the polls up to Election Day and on Election Day if anyone needs to utilize that. Otherwise, any questions for the City Manager? Last call. Okay, then we will move on to public appearances. This is a time for individuals to address the commission about an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to address the commission? No. Brad, anyone on YouTube who would like to address the commission?
There are no questions or comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will move on then to the consent item agenda. Number one is establishing October 12th, 2020, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events malt beverage on sale retailer's license for October 24th from the Yankton Girls Softball Association. And this will be for a cornhole fundraiser. What is your pleasure?
Sarda moves to approve.
Benson, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Brad, anyone on YouTube?
No comments at this time.
All right, thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on consent item two dash one. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosier?
I will abstain. My husband is president of the Softball Association.
Mosier abstains. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Consent item two dash one passes eight zero with one abstention.
Number two on the consent item agenda is consideration of memorandum 20 dash 181 recommending dissolution of the tolling committee. What is your pleasure?
Brunick moves.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? For those in the audience, this will be related to an item later on in the agenda. No commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Brad, anyone on YouTube?
No YouTube comments at this time.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on consent item two dash two. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosier?
Mosier, aye.
Mosier is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Consent item two dash two passes nine zero.
Number three under the consent item agenda is establishing October 12th, 2020, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events retail on sale liquor license for November 14th through November 15th, 2020, from Boomers, Inc. And this would be for the Zombies Realm located at 101 East Third Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Mosier.
Shram second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Do you have something, Ross?
If you haven't done the Zombies Realm, you should. It's awesome.
Thank you for that recommendation. It is the Halloween season. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Brad, anyone on YouTube?
No comments at this time.
Al, roll call, please.
And for all you zombies out there, this is roll call on consent item two dash three. Minor?
Minor votes aye.
Minor is aye. Mosier?
Mosier aye.
Mosier is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Consent item two dash three passes nine zero.
And again, for those following along on the agenda, we deleted, we omitted number four. So we'll move on to number five, which is just sharing that on October 3rd, 2020, at 1:00 PM in front of the Yankton County Government Building, there will be a bridge dedication ceremony for Alan Kokesh. And there'll be no official commission action, but we might have a quorum there. There's no old business, so we'll move on to new business. And number one is consideration of memorandum 20 dash 176 regarding Resolution 20 dash 67, a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility in a B2 highway business district. And that is at 803 Fritig Avenue. And Mike Hachesky Rentals LLC is the owner. What is your pleasure?
Benson moves to approve.
Sarda second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Brad, anyone on YouTube? Brad, are you muted? Did we lose?
Sorry.
Are you there?
There are no comments on YouTube at this time.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on new business item four dash one. Mosier?
Mosier aye.
Mosier is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash one passes nine zero.
Number two under new business is the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1040. And we are also establishing October 12th, 2020, as the date for a public hearing to consider a rezoning from I-1 Industrial to B-3 Central Business for the south side of the 600 block of East Fourth Street. And Mona's LLC is the owner. What is your pleasure?
Introduced. Mosier.
Brunick second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Do we, okay. I was confused by the establishing a public hearing. We'll move on to number three, which is also an introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1041. And we are also establishing October 12th, 2020, as the date for a public hearing to consider rezoning from B2 Highway Business to R32 Family Residential. And from B2 Highway Business to R4 Multiple Family. And this is for the south side of the 1600 block of West 25th Street. Kelly Nielsen is the owner. So this is in Westbrook Estates. Can we get an introduction?
Minor introduces.
Thank you. Moving on to number four. Under new business is consideration of memorandum 20 dash 177 recommending approval of Resolution 20 dash 70 declaring the identified mower as surplus for trade, the purchase of a new mower, and an agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for project number, AP-0622020, which is an $8,300 allocation from Yankton's fuel tax account held by the state for the purchase of a mower dedicated to use at Chan Gurnee Municipal Airport. What is your pleasure?
Benson moved the memorandum. Weber second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission about this item? Brad, anyone on YouTube?
There are no comments on YouTube at this time.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on new business item four dash four. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Mosier?
Mosier aye.
Mosier is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash four passes nine zero.
Number five under new business is consideration memorandum 20 dash 178 and Resolution 20 dash 68 regarding a lawnmower purchase for the Public Works Department. The cost is $13,464. What is your pleasure?
Benson moved the memorandum.
Mosier second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Brad, anyone on YouTube?
No comments at this time.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on new business item four dash five. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda is aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Mosier?
Mosier aye.
Mosier is aye. Shram?
Shram aye.
Shram is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash five passes nine zero.
Number six under new business is consideration memorandum 20 dash 179, which is for approval of membership in the A- of membership in the HGAC by Government Procurement Service. What is your pleasure?
Sarda motion approved.
Brunick seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Brad, anyone on YouTube?
No comments at this time.
Thank you. Al, roll call please.
This is roll call on new business item 4-6. Benson?
Benson I.
Benson is I. Brunick?
Brunick I.
Brunick is I. Sarda?
Sarda I.
Sarda is I. Mybaum?
Mybaum is I.
Mybaum is I. Minor?
Minor I.
Minor is I. Moser?
Moser I.
Moser is I. Shram?
Shram I.
Shram is I. Webber?
Webber is I.
Webber is I. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson I.
Mayor Johnson is I. New business item 4-6 passes 9-0.
Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 20-180 recommending approval of the contract for group health insurance, dental insurance, and vision insurance for city employees. What is your pleasure?
Shram second.
We have a motion and a second. City manager, Amy Leone, could you please go through this agreement for our viewing audience?
Sure. So Corey is going to help me out as well. He has been part of this journey. As you guys, as you commissioners know, we have a health insurance committee. It's comprised of six employees, three which are union, three which are non-union, and then a non-voting coordinator, who's Todd Larson. And Todd is also on the, on the call tonight here too, if you have questions specifically of him. And Corey, our human resources director, was engaged with that process as well, not at the very beginning, but shortly thereafter. And the group decided to get quotes for a health insurance. And they did. They received a couple of quotes, one from our current provider, which is Avera Health, and then one from Health Partners. Health Partners came back lower than, for a similar plan, than of the Avera Health plan did. And I'll let Corey give you the details, but just to briefly overview. They also locked in a guaranteed not-to-exceed rate for the following year, which is of interest to all of us who are trying to do budgeting. One unique characteristic of Health Partners that was very attractive to our employees was that the network is much larger. So it includes Sanford facilities as well as the Mayo Clinic. Our current provider does not include that as an in-network benefit. So that was very desirable. Also, we went back to Avera then and, and to the health plan and said, you know, we do have a lower rate. They came back with an additional set of numbers for us to look at, still was slightly higher than Health Partners. So through the discussion in which the employees on the committee do go back and talk to the, their departments and the other employees, it was deemed desirable to make the recommendation for you to switch our health insurance provider. The union had met and voted to approve this change as well, because as you know, any, you know, the changes that we make are, impact the, those employees as well. However, you know, we do not, no longer have to negotiate the changes. We made that all change in our, in our contract. But the union does approve of the change as well. So there are some other changes as well in the proposal, a change in our vision and dental, I believe. And I'll let Corey give you some more details on that. That's not part of what the committee is charged with doing, but they decided to take a look at that and in some cases found a little bit better rate as well. So Corey, can I ask you to give the commission the details?
Sure. As far as the health insurance, you know, Amy pretty much summarized it. We used figures that were our current enrollment numbers to kind of compare the data and see what the overall compilation looks like. There are some good things in it. There are some things though that are a little impactful. One of those would be the health savings account that the city participates for the employees with the reduction in the cost. The way it offsets, it actually has a little bit of a reduction in the health savings account for the employees. The Health Insurance Committee threw a lot of discussion, and I thought this was a pretty important thing to say, is the discussion was, was, was nice. It was cordial, but it was, there were several opinions all the way around. So that was nice to see that we got a good group of folks engaged in this process and really reached out to their other coworkers to try to get the, the best decision for the group. So there was a little bit of the health savings account discussion, but like Amy remarked earlier, the, the Sanford network seemed to have an overwhelming place in their heart for that. If there's any specific questions, I can engage those. The telehealth, for example, Avera has a telehealth system that currently, they don't do a charge for through COVID-19. They can, and they actually are now allowed to not do a, a payment like a co-pay scenario. But when COVID-19 eventually will end, and we believe it will, then those rates would go back to what they used to be. Health Partners has not decided to do that. They've kept the payments exactly the same. They use a, a network called Virtuell, and that has three free visits to get started. They're more of a national network with those. Avera has their own specific network. But I think overall, the, the thing that came down to it was the additional network, the feeling of places they could go. And there was some savings between the two plans, but after I ran some numbers, you know, I figure that there's a $56,000 difference between the two plans with Health Partners being the lesser of the increases. And as the memo states, you know, they, Avera came back with a 6% blended. Health Partners comes back with a 4.06. Majority of that savings comes in the traditional plan. So the rates for the traditional plan, which is about two-thirds of our employees, does rest in minimal increase. The opposite of that, on the high deductible side, the high deductible health plan has a greater increase between the two, whereas Avera was more set kind of in the middle. Just kind of giving you some differences there. The dental plan, try to go over this really quick. The dental plan, it's my understanding, hasn't necessarily been quoted for a little while. So we thought we would take a look at that and quoted four different places outside of Delta Dental. All of them, actually, well, three out of the four of them came back with a lower premium across the boards. The fourth one just matched Delta. Delta did not raise the rates at all, but the other three came back even less than. Delta currently has a $1,000 annual maximum. All of these others have a $1,500 annual maximum. And we asked for these all to be in the 95th UCR, which essentially just means usual customary and reasonable, kind of what those average charges look like, to be a competitive area there. So the Health Insurance Committee decided to recommend the provider of principal for that. And the vision came across with another company called The Standard against Sun Life. And the, the standard was pretty comparable in the buy, in the core plan, but was extremely competitive in the buy-up plan. Quite a bit less on regular premiums and extra, extra coverage on the buy-up plan. More set, low dollars versus percentages off. Those are kind of the, the things that they really looked at. Again, I, I thank them myself, and I continue to thank the Health Insurance Committee for being the, the people that want to dive in and into those things, that insurance isn't always the most fun thing to do. But as far as our employees go, and what I call kind of our insured community is, you know, we need somebody to do that and, and dig into that. So we appreciate their efforts for that. You guys have any other questions?
Corey, this is Commissioner Shram. Is there a, is it an annual decision, or is this, are we locked in for several years with this new provider?
The rate is a current rate. The lock that Amy mentioned essentially means they will agree not to raise the rates next year, which is technically 2022, more than 15%. So they can go up next year. There's not a lock for a multiple-year agreement. But we did get a lock for a lid, if you will. So we do insurance quote every year, is my understanding. We try to look at those things. And I, it's my also understanding that from the last few years, the other vendors were not as competitive as Avera Health Plans were. This year being, for whatever reason, there was some decisions to really get aggressive. And I think that's what we're seeing here. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. And I guess a follow-up would be more hypothetical, but are you hearing an industry chatter of rates going to be going extremely high? Is that why they're offering the lock to be, or the cap for next year because of the whole COVID situation? Or is it, is that, I guess my question is that chatter, COVID chatter happening right now as a potential vast increase in costs?
Well, I think with, with the healthcare costs, not knowing where they could go, how, how quickly things could escalate, whether we, 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 we really put our healthcare system under a lot of strain, and where the costs just really go up high, we, without really, we don't have the same needle to predict using past data. So there is this idea that this thing could go, go completely crazy. So we thought it was nice and important we ask them for that, and they would agree to that, that it was at least a lid for that.
Thank you.
Any more commission discussion?
Hey Corey, this is Commissioner Mybaum. Just a quick question in regards to Sanford's qualification as being in-network with Health Partners. So that's not just limited to, say, Sanford clinics. That's Sanford's hospitals as well, specialty care, et cetera. So there's, you know, essentially it's an all-encompassing Sanford. It's not limited in anybody. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah. So I went in and looked at the Health Partners portal, and I just listed clinics in my area, and I, or you can choose either hospitals, clinics, you know, all the way down to those different groups, and they were all populating up in their network.
Any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission? Brad, anyone on YouTube?
No comments at this time.
Al, roll call please.
This is roll call on new business item 4-7. Brunick?
Brunick I.
Brunick is I. Sarda?
Sarda I.
Sarda is I. Mybaum?
Mybaum is I.
Mybaum is I. Minor?
Minor I.
Minor is I. Moser?
I will abstain from voting. My husband's a city employee.
Moser abstains. Shram?
Shram I.
Shram is I. Webber?
Webber is I.
Webber is I. Benson?
Benson I.
Benson is I. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson I.
Mayor Johnson is I. New business item 4-7 passes 8-0 with one abstention.
Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 20-182 and resolution 20-69 recommending abandonment of our towing agreement and assigning towing agents. What is your pleasure?
Webber moves.
Sarda second.
We have a motion and a second. Amy or Ross, did one of you want to explain to the public what we're doing here?
Sure. A few years ago, I think probably exactly almost eight years ago, the city started talking about entering into a towing agreement. In that agreement, we had a schedule of towers that would serve the community on a rotating basis. So our officers, if they needed to have a tow, would contact whoever was on the schedule and try to get them to come out and do the tow, whether that was for an accident or a snow situation or a disabled vehicle. One of our towers did not want to be party to that agreement, so they were not on the schedule. Over time, the towing companies changed, and the first couple of years, we stuck pretty closely to the agreement. And then as the years went on, it became more and more difficult to get the individual that was actually on the schedule there. As it ended up, the one tow, towing agent who would not be part of that schedule and did not want to be part of that agreement, was the one we ended up contacting the most in the end because they were the most responsive. In visiting with the supervisors with the police department, they wondered whether or not there was another way to conduct business. You know, our officers have a limited amount of, of resources, meaning number of people on staff at one time. So for them to spend a long time having dispatch call or them call over and over, somebody on a schedule that isn't going to respond, doesn't really work for them. They want to get the person, the towing, the towor to the site as quickly as possible and get that car out of harm's way or the roadway or this, or get it out of Adam's way if he and his guys are going to be plowing as soon as possible. So we took that to Ross, and Ross is just the magic man here this, this week. Ross said, we don't have to have a towing agreement. In fact, we can name towing agents, and as long as they're one of the ones named, our officers can go ahead and call, you know, anybody on that list. So yeah, that's what we're asking you to, to do in this resolution is to authorize these towing agents. Now, the question did come up as to, well, how are we going to know this is fair? And one isn't getting more service than the other? Well, you know, I would say the, if they're responsive, they'll get the business based on how responsive they are and based on how, what, what they determine the price to be. We tried to make it fair over the years, and that didn't work for us at all. And I think it's more important that it works for us than it works for the, you know, than that we're going to be fair. I think the market can weigh that out. So I'd like for you all to approve this resolution and see if this works better for our officers. If we do get some complaints from local towers, we can take a look at it again in the future. But I do think that based on what we're hearing from our officers, you know, if there is a lot of toes, there's, you know, especially if it's weather-related, there's going to be a lot of business to, to go around as well. So I don't know if Chief has more to add to that or not, but I think this is just a much cleaner way of doing things. Also, there, it removes the inconsistency, or I guess the, you know, knowledge of, okay, who's on the towing schedule this week, and then trying to call them over and over and them not responding. I mean, that's, that's not good customer service either. So I'll let Chief make some comments too.
The city manager covered it fairly well, but one of the other things that we want, it does not exclude, if a specific citizen has a request for a tow company, we still call that tow company at that citizen's request. So clarification there.
Any commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission? Brad, anyone on YouTube?
No comments at this time.
Al, roll. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on new business item 4-8. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosher?
Mosher, aye.
Mosher is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-8 passes 9-0.
Number nine under new business is consideration of memorandum 20-184 recommending approval of the contracts between the City of Yankton and Banner Associates for Martin Creek Bank and Trail Restoration. This is a $633,919 contract for field surveying, design services, and construction administration. And FEMA has so far committed $278,269 towards this project. What is your pleasure?
Mosher moves the memorandum.
Brunick seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion?
Yeah, can the city manager walk through it a little bit?
I knew I wasn't going to, I knew I wasn't going to get by with no comments. I had my microphone on and waiting, and I thought, well, maybe I'll get by without making comments. Adam is on the call as well, so I'll let him talk a little bit about the technical aspects of the contract. But I noted the hesitation, because, you know, 278 and 663, those don't even out, right? I mean, there's a big gap there in funding. So this is the pinch we're going to start to feel, I think, as we start moving forward with repair of Martin Creek. Now, Adam and Brad and his team are still working with the state, and they'll still work with FEMA, because we do think there's possibility of getting more grant funds. So I don't want you to think necessarily that this is going, the remainder of this project's going to be all our responsibility. We will have some responsibility, but I know they're going to continue to work hard to try to make some of that gap up in grant funding. But we can be certain that the amount of repair, both when it comes to design and engineering, and when it comes to physical construction, is far going to exceed what we have coming towards us from FEMA. So while it's a couple of years later now, we're going to feel that pinch, and we're going to have to spend some of our own money to get that bank stabilized. And, you know, it's not ideal, certainly, especially right now with the uncertain situation we have in our economy, and as we were just starting to look forward to some new big things in our capital budget with the city. For the next couple of years, we're going to have to focus on some of the situations that happen to us, and we're going to have to respond to them. So we're not maybe going to be able to do some of the things that we visioned. We have to repair some of the things that were visioned for us a while ago. So that's just conceptually where we're, I think, where we're feeling, all feeling that, oh, gosh, that's a lot of money feeling. But that's, you know, the cost, what it costs. We do negotiate through this process, but we do think this is a fair price for the amount of work that's going to be done. Banner's very well-known, very good. We had three good engineering firms bring proposals. They were discussed with a team of staff and discussed with FEMA, and FEMA also believes this is to be, this is a good contract. So Adam, I'll let you go over what the contract all includes, and then we'll stand for questions.
Like the memo says, this is a contract for design services and construction administration. Once a project is put together, as this project moves along, or the design services move along, we'll be keeping in touch with FEMA and the state to make sure everything is done appropriately and in a manner that's acceptable to FEMA. It's very, FEMA, the FEMA documents are very specific as to where the damages occurred along the portions of Martin Creek. So this, this design will follow along with those areas and those identified locations. Open to have the plan set or the design together in early spring to submit to FEMA, and then go through their review process to establish a project, and that'll hopefully determine a lot more funding from FEMA to make the construction repairs. The $278,000 for engineering services, that's already been obligated by FEMA, was, I believe it was based off of putting back what was there pre-flood. So that would be wherever erosion can occur along the creek, to put back soil along those banks. And that's not a feasible or very wise solution to repair the creek. So this project will go above and beyond putting it back the way it was and making appropriate repairs to stabilize those banks and protect them from future erosion should something like this happen again. So it'll be a process, and it won't be quick, but we'll keep working through it.
So Adam, do you anticipate this will be designed as a phased project? Where we could do chunks at a time, depending on how much funding we have?
I can't answer that at this time, I guess. It just depends on what FEMA, how FEMA responds to what we come up with this spring, so...
Adam, on the, this is Commissioner Mosher. On the maps we were provided, you're referencing then the areas in red. That's basically where the damage is and what FEMA has approved to be fixed, is what's highlighted in red on that map? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any more commission discussion? This is, yeah, it's exciting that we're getting to this next step in the process, but it will also be daunting to see what kind of price tags lie ahead of us to get to where we want to go. So thank you, Adam, for working with FEMA and now Banner to get us to that next step. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Brad, is there anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the question?
No comments at this time.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on new business item 4-9. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosher?
Mosher, aye.
Mosher is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-9 passes 9-0.
Number 10 under new business is consideration of memorandum 20-183 recommending approval of the agreement between Bonham County and the City of Yankton regarding booking and processing arrests made by the City of Yankton. What is your pleasure? Schramm?
Benson, so move.
We have a motion and a second. Amy or Ross, can you just briefly summarize this for the audience? We did discuss this at length during our work session earlier this evening.
Sure, Mayor. The, in South Dakota, in a place like Yankton where the county jail is run by the sheriff pursuant to policies adopted by the county commission, the city has no control over the circumstances in which the county will accept into its jail prisoners from the Yankton Police Department. There are, there have been times, based on COVID restrictions, that the jail has determined that it is full, leaving the city into a position where we have no choice but to release a prisoner, or a better option would be to enter into an agreement with another county, in this case, Bonham County, to, in those overflow situations, book and house our prisoners. That is the function of this agreement. If this agreement is adopted by the City of Yankton and Bonham County, then the court will have the ability to order that inmates that are not able to be booked and housed in Yankton County may be then transported to Bonham County. So this is the first step. The court can order these inmates to another county, but only pursuant to a written agreement. That's what this agreement attempts to do. Under this agreement, the City of Yankton prisoners that cannot be housed in the Yankton County Jail may be housed in the Bonham County Jail at a cost of $70 a prisoner day, which is essentially any portion of the day that the prisoner is inside the jail facility in Bonham County. Those fees are anticipated by statute to be paid by Yankton County. However, if the court rules, for whatever reason, that those fees are not properly payable by Yankton County, then the city will be responsible for those fees. The City of Yankton will be responsible for getting the prisoners from Yankton to the Bonham County Jail facility. However, at that point, those prisoners will be transported by Bonham County, if necessary, at a cost of $25 per hour for the deputies that are responsible for that transportation. Again, those costs would be paid presumably by Yankton County, and only by the city if the court rules that the county is not responsible for those fees. Same with medical expenses that may be necessary for a city inmate that needs medical care while they are in the Bonham County Jail. Per statute, those fees would be covered by Yankton County. However, if court ruled otherwise, then the city would be the guarantor of those obligations. So the risk is low, but the way the agreement is drafted, there could be a situation where the city would have to cover those expenses in order to make Bonham County comfortable with an agreement of this nature. But I think this is an excellent step, something that we can do to provide us a backup. It's, we've experienced a few situations in the last five months where we have had the jail inform us that they are at capacity and unable to accept our inmates. This is allowing us a backup in that overflow situation.
Commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Brad, any comments on YouTube?
No comments at this time.
Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on new business item 4-10. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mosher?
Mosher, aye.
Mosher is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-10 passes 9-0.
There being no other business on tonight's agenda, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, Benson.
Sarda, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on the adjournment of the September 28 city commission meeting. Mosher?
Mosher, aye.
Mosher is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor's aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Roll call on adjournment passes 9-0.
This meeting is adjourned. Go forth and enjoy the rest of your evening.